Alright, sounds good. Well, good evening or afternoon or whatever it is at this time, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, we're going to talk about the armor subscriber radio equipment a little bit here. I would ask that if you have any questions during anything I'm talking about, just go ahead and interrupt me. I'm okay with that and certainly follow up with some more, Dan. I'm sure you'll all have some questions. This is a topic that I could talk about all day long with many different people. And sometimes it's a very misunderstood topic on how all these things kind of work. So, so we'll dive right in. I just want to provide a little bit of definition on what we're talking about and kind of how radio systems work, not just here in Good Hugh County, but in the state. So we have subscriber equipment and we have infrastructure equipment, two different things. Subscriber equipment, as is pictured in the picture here, is mobile radios and portable radios, right, used by first responders to public works users across the county and across the state for that matter. When I refer to a portable radio, I'm talking about the thing that's on the hip of a responder or something they carry around with them in their hand. When I refer to a mobile radio, I'm referring to a radio that is typically 99% of the time installed into a vehicle, whether that be a fire truck, police car, in some places golf carts, other vehicles used by public works. And that is all referred to as subscriber equipment, just like your cell phone would be used when you work with Verizon. You're considered to have subscriber equipment. Each one of these radios or devices have a radio ID assigned to it, much like your cell phone has a cell phone number assigned to it. And so that's kind of that. When I refer to infrastructure equipment, that's all the stuff on the backend to make this stuff work, right? To make all the subscriber equipment work. The infrastructure equipment, much more expensive than the already expensive subscriber equipment. That's all your radio towers, the antennas, the repeaters, the channels, the switches, the routers, the microwave radio, on and on and on at the radio sites. And for what it's worth, and as you may already know, we have nine of these sites that look just like what's pictured here in this picture across Good Hugh County to support all this equipment. Any questions thus far on that?
Is, is there a need to have more tower equipment? I mean, more towers, are we completely covered with the nine we have?
We are, we are, we are about 96% covered for portable coverage across the county. There are places such as Down and Welch inside of a building that there's some coverage and signal strength issues. You're going to have that, right? But I would say we're roughly 96%. And in fact, what we guarantee the users, and when I say users, I mean those people that are using the subscriber equipment. If I say users, I might also be referring to an agency, that agency being a police department, fire department, a public works users, ambulance person, right? Our users are guaranteed 95% area coverage reliability for portable radio operation above ground in light to medium buildings throughout most of the county, right? So we're sitting good.
We have nine.
And while we have now, while we have quite the terrain in Good Hugh County to provide that coverage. And you know, we're kind of unique to that, and that's why we have nine. And so the backbone of the armor radio system in Good Hugh County is owned and operated solely by MINDOT. There's five towers in the county that MINDOT own, and then there's nine that the county owns. Now, we joined this and we have to give a lot of credit that many of you may remember Sheriff Scott McNerlin and Nate Tim who built this thing early on. We added four additional tower sites to provide us that portable coverage, like every county needs to do if they want good coverage on their portable radio equipment. But we also added two more channels to the system. And I won't get into the weeds right now about the type of system, but we own the equipment and all nine of those sites to make this all work. So while MINDOT might own the actual facility, we own some additional channel and equipment to support the additional use by Good Hugh County users.
And is there any shared towers with other counties, so there's cross-county or not? I mean, if you were at the very southwest corner of the county, do you get onto somebody else's tower?
You sure could. Okay. Yep, you could, a Good Hugh County public works operator user of the portable radio can go to Koochikane County, Lake of the Woods, depending on the radio resource they select to are going to have radio coverage and they can talk anywhere in the state. So in essence, while we own subsystems, stuff that give us the good coverage in the county, every county owns some sort of subsystem, some don't need to because MINDOT's towers support portable coverage for them, lucky for them. But yeah, anywhere in the state, it's a shared system, you know, so any user, and there's currently a 114,000 users on the state armor system, any one of those subscriber units could come through Good Hugh County and use whatever site gives them the best coverage.
But we don't have a shared tower for counties, I think that's what you're asking. Well, it's like, it's like if, if we get to a certain, or Dakota County, it doesn't matter which direction you go. But are there towers that meet our needs across our line? And are we, are we constantly looking for ways to enhance the system by being partners on, they can use ours, we can use theirs?
Yep, yep, and again, without getting into the weeds, because that's a whole nother eight-hour course. Depending on the radio resource you're selected to as a radio user at any given time, you could be one of our deputies up in the northwestern part of the county here, and you're out of range of Good Hugh County's simulcast system, but because of that, we'll call it a channel for layman's term, even though it's referred to as a talker, because that channel is given the ability to work on the armor system, not just in Good Hugh County, but every county around Good Hugh County, you could be a Good Hugh County deputy well south of, in the furthest part of Homestead County, and you have full bars, if you will, just like you went on selling them, on our local resources, so it's all kind of how it's designed, but yeah, yep. So today, Good Hugh County operates and maintains the local subsystem, the armor radio system for all users in Good Hugh County. The sheriff's office carries out the responsibility via the armor participation plan between the statewide emergency communications board and the county. The county does bear the primary responsibility for the health, security, and integrity of the system, along with many other communication systems, such as VHF equipment that is not shared because it's solely for our fire department EMS agencies. Users of the armor system within the county have elected to participate as a subscriber with end-user radios operating on the system. Each user agency, in consideration of the mutual undertakings and agreements, have entered into a communication system subscriber agreement. That, an example, has been provided to all of you of what that looks like. And then basically those subscriber agreements are consistent and aligned with other counties, and they establish defined rights and obligations of each with respect to the coordinated purchase, maintenance, technical, and administrative support, and use of end-user radios on the county's subsystem network. So let's look at what other counties do, because there's a lot of talk about radios, who pays for what and all that. So let's dive into that. So no county purchases subscriber radio equipment without charge, meaning no county in the state of Minnesota purchases radio equipments for another agency without charging them something. And if not the minimum cost of that radio over a course of time, they certainly get more than 100% of what that radio costs and probably more for administrative costs and such. Hennepin County, for example, leases radios, but only subject to the board's budget availability. Hennepin County charges an annual support fee of $286.32 per radio. And that would be any radio that's under the Hennepin County Sheriff's Armor Participation Plan. So, for example, Good Hugh County has, we're about at 1,300 radios in the county. And so how Hennepin County supports their backbone is they charge, whether you bought the radio from the county or not, $286 per radio per year to the agencies. So it's kind of like having a cell phone number, and they pay that to support that infrastructure cost. Hennepin County also bills an additional hourly rate for repairs conducted in-house. They're fortunate enough to have a slew of radio technicians to repair equipment in-house. Shisago County leases radios at $890 per year per radio until that radio is paid off, meaning the county board authorizes the sheriff to buy all the radios for anyone in the county that would need them, regardless of the agency or the governing body, at a cost of $890 per year per radio until that radio is paid off. They then also charge an annual support fee of $566 per radio for the first 25 newer radios per agency. Washington County charges an annual support fee of $408 per radio per year. So they purchase, they have the agencies purchase the radios that they need. The county programs them and all that in line with their agreement takes care of getting that radio up and running and give it back to them. But then they say, oh, we're going to charge it $400 per year per radio, and that budget, that revenue that the Washington County takes in, pays for that person and everything that goes along to support that infrastructure. Of course, they have huge infrastructure costs up there. Beyond that, Washington County has established a radio repair fund to help offset the cost of any repair to a user's radio. The cost is $1 per month per radio until that fund reaches $16,000, and then that cost stops. It kicks back up again once it gets down to 5,000. The nice thing about that for them is when they buy these expensive Motorola radios from Motorola and they break, they can go to Washington County Sheriff's Office, their radio technician say, hey, can you repair this for us? And whether he does it in-house or he ships it off to the Motorola depot to re-repair, the cost of that's covered because of that $1 per radio per year. It's kind of a nice thing that they do.
$1 per month per radio.
Correct, yeah, I stand corrected, so $12 per year per radio, yeah, until it reaches 16,000.
And is that balanced for the county or is that balanced by jurisdiction?
That's a good question.
Because I wouldn't think 16 grand would last that long.
Well, it, it sits in that budget that carries over year after year after year, right? It's an enterprise budget, and then once it gets down to 5,000, it needs to be built back up. All those agencies start being invoiced again until it's back up to 6,000. And sometimes with Motorola equipment, and I don't work for Motorola, but they make a solid product. And we, for example, have decided, elected since, since I've been here, to trim the three-year warranty at 300 and some dollars at the initial cost, because I've never, I rarely have any Motorola portable or mobile break or not work. And the very occasion that I do, I can fix it myself, whether it be putting a knob back on or something, or there's a flat fee of like $500 to send it to Motorola and they take care of it no matter what it is. So they build pretty robust equipment.
At, at $12 a year, it takes 1,333 radios to get to 16,000 dollars. They probably got way to have more, 1,333, probably, you know, they can replenish that fund so fast.
Now, keep in mind, this is the radio repair fund.
Yep.
So they still pay an annual support fee of $400 per year per radio.
Per radio.
Yep, right.
But to replenish that, you know, Washington County 1,300 radios doesn't go very far.
No.
They're not going to be able to replenish that if it goes down pretty damn fast.
Yeah, and because of how they're built, it doesn't go down very fast. And that $400 per year, that is paying for the support, that's paying for that infrastructure that Washington County has to keep online to make all that stuff work, because in lieu of that, their stuff doesn't work, right?
And that's where Nate went to, right?
Correct. So just want to touch base on a couple of sections of interest in the exist, current and existing communications subscriber agreements. First, section 2.4 of the example that you have in front of you, it states subscriber fleet support. County, being Good Hugh County, and the sheriff's office, agrees to provide subscriber fleet support such as software updates, programming configuration support, and access to special event radios and user training support. What does that mean? That means these radios come in, I program for them, we get them online, ship them out. With the new brand of Motorola radios, like all pieces of technology, they have firmware updates. If there's a firmware update that is security impacting to the system, I'll go in person, I'll get that stuff programmed up so I can turn the entirety of the system. If there's an update or something, I take care of it for all 1,300 users we have in the county, all radios. And then access to special event radios, but what is that? Well, some of you may recall, we bought a cash of radios using CARES funding, and that cash is maintained by my division. And if any agency that has signed an agreement with the county here says, hey, we have a house fire, or we have this incident going on, or HHS needs them for something, I can program them up, get them out, do some initial in-the-field training, and they're good to go at no cost. Second part that's interesting there is county does not purchase, lease, rent, or replace radios for any user. Section 2.5 provisional use of user purchased and owned radios. This requires pre-approval equipment for support by the county. So if I am the Kenyon Fire Chief and I want to purchase some radios, I purchase those from Motorola via ANCOM. They're the authorized distributor of that equipment, but I can't just purchase whatever I want because I got to purchase the stuff that's going to work on the system. And the system administrator, that's me, identifies what works and what doesn't. Now, there's features that you can buy that you don't have to have, that are nice to have, and there's features that you don't need. And so we've gotten very good about those agencies that are looking to add a portable radio, mobile radio, get ahold of me and say, hey, who should we talk to? I line them up with ANCOM, they spec it out, and I said, once you get your spec sheet, send it back to me. I'll look at it, make sure it's in line, you're not getting dinged for anything more that you need or anything less that you don't have, right? That you do need. And so otherwise, the county has no obligation to support, maintain, or assist in the repairs of these radios. Again, under that same section, the county does not purchase, lease, rent, or replace radios for any user. So next slide here, Good Hugh County Communication Systems Subscriber Agreement Items Worth Mentioning. Good Hugh County does not charge support fees, including fees for subscriber units or the infrastructure. The Good Hugh County Sheriff does repurpose radios today to users in needs. What does that mean? That means as we upgrade our fleet within the sheriff's office and going into 2023, is going to be our final upgrade to replace the whole entire fleet with the newest generation of radios in the sheriff's office. The stuff we are taking out of service that is discontinued, typically you can send that back to Motorola, maybe get a rebate, but when they get it back, they send it through a grinder, and your rebate's maybe 100 bucks. And so that radio may still work. It's old, it's dated, if it fails, I can't fix it. If you can't find any batteries anymore, I can't replace the batteries for you. You could buy aftermarket batteries, they're not guaranteed to be as good. And so, but because they still actually work, what we're doing today, the sheriff has said, hey, instead of throwing those in the trash, let's repurpose them and program them, give them to these agencies that are need. So I have made it clear to any fire department, ambulance service, public works, even our own public works, that if you need and have a reason for another portable radio, or maybe to replace one that broke that we can't get fixed, I'm going to take this box of radios I have piled up, reprogram one up, hopefully get you a good battery, and you'll be up and running, right? So that's what that means. Secondly, the communications captain, myself, I do assist in any troubleshooting, repairing of users' equipment if there's no additional cost incurred to the county to do so, right? So I maintain a lot of parts, right? And I can take stuff apart, put it back together. If I can do that without any cost other than my time for any of our users, especially our public safety users, I do that. And we have been doing that, and that's a good thing that we do. I want to touch on budget 211. So budget 211, the communications infrastructure budget, this was established in 2021. This budget was created to separate all costs necessary to maintain, operate, and support the local radio subsystem, that infrastructure cost. This benefits all users as expenses are directly used to support the system, which benefits all those users. Currently has no revenue, right, such as support fees, et cetera, right? So 211 budget, anything that we have in there pays for continual upgrades via MINDOT of the armor system. So the armor every five years releases updates to the system. All that infrastructure stuff has software and stuff on it, it's updated. And so all the line items in there will pay for the maintenance upgrade, upkeep, the service of the generators at our four sites, all the stuff that keeps this stuff online and working, right? It has no revenue, that comes out of the taxpayer funds, right, in budget 211 under the sheriff's office. There's a reason why that has no revenue. There's no revenue right now because we don't charge subscriber fees, like some counties do. I've mentioned three of them, other than those three I talked about, which are metro counties. If a county in the state has a subsystem that they're paying for to maintain, that is on, that is just part of the sheriff's office budget. They just pay that. Again, there are counties, because of the backbone tower sites, provide them enough coverage, they don't have to add anything. We all wish we were them, unfortunately we're not. Here's my suggestion and some opportunities. Good Hugh County should always continue to maintain the infrastructure that supports all radio users. In fact, we're required to do so by design, meaning that contract that we have between the county and MINDOT or the statewide emergency communications board, that's how it is designed. It's no different from any other county. Small agencies may have trouble paying even the smallest amount of fees. Good Hugh County should not get into the business of purchasing leasing subscriber radios directly to users. Why? Well, in my opinion, it's not a good financial spot to be in, right? Secondly, subscriber radios are an operational expense and should be budgeted as such. Meaning if you're a fire department and ambulance service in any one of the governmental bodies in the county and you use radios, that's an operational expense, you know, different than the AED that the fire department may need, no different than, you know, the handgun that Red Wing Fire, Red Wing Police Department might need, right? That's an operational expense. However, I, I do, I do make this comment. Should eligible funding become available to Good Hugh County to support the purchase of subscriber radios? It might be beneficial to these local agencies as a one-time purchase. If the board were to make that decision at some point because of a funding mechanism that came available, I would say that this should be done in writing, that such procurement is in a one-time thing. And again, we revert back to this, that there's no requirement for the county to provide this, right? Keep in mind. I just want to touch on the cost of this stuff, and it keeps going up. The only time I think we're going to see these numbers come back down is when MINDOT or the state of Minnesota renegotiates the system upgrade agreement with Motorola. The system upgrade agreement is, hey, we want to maintain this radio system well into the future Motorola. What do we got to pay, and we're going to negotiate the cost. We're currently on a five-year plan at $33 million. That $33 million is divided between all agencies based on their infrastructure. Part of those system upgrade agreements, we can negotiate discounts on mobile radios, portable and mobile radios. We're in year three of a five-year plan with Motorola. In year three, four, and five, the $200, $300 discount that we were given under the system upgrade agreement only was for the first two. So everything went up $200 or $300, but that's because of the agreement. Everything up, everything has also gone up another $200, $300 per radio because of the cost inflation and everything else. So these numbers are tough to swallow, and it blows me away, because I just saw a new quote today for a law enforcement portable at $5,300, for a law enforcement mobile at $5,800. Firing EMS portables are about $200, about $5,100, firing EMS portable $5,300, and so on, public works. And again, a lot of these amounts vary based on the features and the model of the discipline. For example, there's a lot of talk right now about encryption statewide, and that every user who has an armor radio should have encryption capability, including fire and EMS. And that is a change, because in the past, the only people that needed encryption is law enforcement, for law enforcement sensitive things.
Explain what that is.
Encryption, encryption is if you go buy a scanner, you want to put in the frequency, for example, you can hear it, it's in the clear, there's no problem. Now, once we encrypt that radio traffic, that scanner's going to sound like a fax machine, the audio was encrypted. And you need to have a device with the encryption key and all that stuff to decrypt it on the, from the receiver and the sender and receiver on each end of that talk path.
Would it be, sorry, would it be automatic?
Would what be?
On encryption, I mean, it's automatic, so you wouldn't hear the white noise that?
Right, yeah, unless you have, if you have a scanner, you don't have that encryption module in there to decrypt that. But yeah, encryption is set, it can be done multiple ways, it could be selectable, so a user can turn it on and off on the fly. We don't typically do that because that confuses users. You know, if a, if a cop's in a bad situation, is he going to remember, oh, I should encrypt this traffic and have to hit another button? We just have identified channels on the system that will be encrypted. So those are the costs there. And with that being said, there, there's a lot of statewide conversations going on, going on regarding the cost of radios. Everybody in outstate Minnesota, and when I say everyone, users that are fire departments, small-town fire departments, small-town EMS agencies. I won't even mention public works, because when you get outstate Minnesota, public works in a small town is like, are you kidding me? We can't even buy one of these radios, much less, you know? So everyone's talking about the cost of these, and how do we do that, and how do we support that? Conversations have and are continuing to occur locally in our region and across the state on how to replace existing subscriber radio equipment. Many, again, I said this, many fire and EMS agencies are in the same boat. The equipment's expensive, and there's little to no funding currently to replace that. And I think it's important to note that a lot of the grants that have came through from the federal government down to the state were for homeland security, emergency management-type grants. And right up and through last year, you could not use that grant funding that became available to your radio region, your, for example, the Southeast Emergency Communications Board. That grant was only eligible for subscriber equipment, a portable or a mobile, if you were new to the armor system. Well, that hasn't changed since armor was created in 2002 in Minnesota. Most people are on armor, and so they found that initial grant, they got their initial equipment. I think where the failure occurred is no one was told these agencies, you better start planning now to replace this stuff, right? And so unless you have larger budgets, these fire department EMS agencies, they don't, they can't have enough pancake breakfasts to buy a radio, right? And so I did ask the Shisago County Radio Systems Manager, I said, you have this thing, you can lease all, the county's leasing these radios, and they're not making any money on them, they certainly aren't leasing them on a deal to these fire departments. They said, what are your out-county fire departments in Shisago County doing to pay for these? He goes, they're just not, there's not leasing, and they're on their own, and they buy one or two radios a year, because that's all they can afford. So it's a tough thing right now, there's been some proposed bills and a variety of funding avenues that are continually looked at, with no source or mechanism of funding currently identified. And so when I mentioned that, there was a lawmaker in western Minnesota that proposed a bill to allocate $250 million of the state budget via grant program for outstate firing EMS agencies to purchase subscriber equipment. That ended up going through the legislative process of the state and turning out to be $100,000. And then that beyond that, so. I don't, I don't know what they're going to do here. There's some talk about 911 funding, and do we want to dip into that? And the consensus right now is we don't want to do that, because 911 funding that is generated through the use of 911 fees, the federal government sets what you can use it for upon the states, the states set that. We can't use those 911 fees for subscriber radio equipment. And I would say we wouldn't want to do that, because we already know that the equipment and technologies in a 911 center or PSAP need that funding, because that's a big expense right there, and that's what that funding was meant for. So that is currently going back to get a little clarity to say, we can buy mobile radios and portable radios as long as it's used by a 911 dispatcher or public safety telecommunicator. That's the proposed language that's going to be proposed again this year. But recently at our Southeast Regional Advisory Committee under the Southeast Emergency Communications Board, we said we would agree to that language change, and Sheriff Turkelson said, as long as we can tell them, would the state figure out a mechanism to support subscriber radio equipment? You know, we agree with that, but we also think this still needs to happen. So it's a moving target, and unfortunately, it hasn't, nothing's been identified yet.
So what is it, the, I don't want to say if there's a drop dead date, but we're transitioning to newer radios because the old ones still, as they fail, but there's not a radio that, there's their old radios that we have at Public Works here within the county or other else, ambulance, that as of 2023 are not going to work?
Not right now, no.
Okay, what's not right now, 2024? I mean, there's.
There is no deadline. The deadline for them to be discontinued is December 31st, 2019, meaning Motorola no longer supports them?
So all of these agencies have radios that are fully functioning, working, meeting their needs. The difference is if they fail or they break, you have replacement radios that may be able to update or upgrade. If they need extra, they're going to cost this much money, whereas they want to, where they should all be thinking as of 2019 or now, we need to update these radios as if it's fixed, so they don't need to go out and buy. You can't tell in a Lake City ambulance or the fire department or whatever, you need to get 20 new radios because they don't work. No, they worked. You can't tell in a Lake City ambulance or the fire department or whatever, you need to get twenty new radios because they don't work. No, you work, they worked just fine. But if you want to up, if it breaks, you're going to need to replace it. So you're not spending fifty or a hundred thousand dollars in radios, you might be spending ten thousand to get two. This year, two next year, five. So everything works. Still functions, just, just like your laptop computer, just like your cell phone. You need to update it, it's going to cost you money. So, right? And it all function, they just.
Yep, yep. And then some of the struggles that we're getting right now is while they function, we can't find batteries for them anymore because Motorola is not making the OEM battery.
Right.
Um, and, and the aftermarket stuff coming out of China isn't, isn't whole. And so therefore it's no good. All right.
They've all got cell phones experiencing the same thing. I'm just, I'm like, but yeah, it seems like descriptions people are coming up with is that they need to buy all new radios next year or which they don't, they just, they're going to need to replace what currently is failing or not working. Or if they chose to, they can replace their whole collection of radios, but if they're functioning today, they will continue to function.
Correct. There's no deadline that has been set either by the statewide emergency communications board or any board below that, including our, our local, us at the local level that if you've got that amount of radio, it's, it's done as a this day, twenty-twenty-four. Yeah.
The communication aspect of all the hardware from where everything on it still works, functions within the armor system that is developed today. So.
Today, yep.
Do you see this happening again in twenty years? All of a sudden Motorola is going to say, okay, now what you bought in twenty-two to twenty-four, we're going to quit servicing that again.
It's going to continually evolve, absolutely, and probably sooner than twenty years.
But with more modern, uh, technology, aren't they easier programmable?
Yes, yes. The current generation that's discontinued, as I said, December thirty-first, that many of our users are on. That stuff's not upgradable. Um, so small features like a dispatcher may only get the GPS of that exact radio on that person's hip or that exact ambulance via the armor system. Those upgrades are coming. So if you're stuck on this discontinued equipment, you, you're not going to have these newer features that come out and it kind of becomes, and encryption is one of them, right? There's the encryption issue that if you're not upgraded, you're now not going to have your situational awareness because you don't have the new equipment to be able to hear that. That situational awareness piece is really big more so for law enforcement than it is to fire an EMS. But there is going to be a time where too bad for you because you've got the old stuff and, and you can't upgrade, you know? I, uh, I, I don't see anyone setting a date saying you have to upgrade, even though you can inch that thing along for another ten years. I don't see anyone saying, setting a hard deadline. Now, you're going to start losing features and at some point, you know, depending on the cybersecurity world, those things could open up a possible vulnerability. Whereas the new generation of subscriber equipment, it's, it's like a computer, right? An expensive little computer on your hip. They have firmware updates now about every six months. So what I do is I look at those firmware updates and decide, is it worth my time, which is many hours at this point, to get out in the field and touch every new radio to get that firmware update on it? And there's also technologies built in these things that I can do that over the air that saves me time. But the firmware updates can have security updates on them too, which are also in, important and, and at some point may become required. But I can't, I can't spell out what the statewide emergency communications board is going to dictate on that.
When we updated at the county level, are they're all encrypted? Sheriff's Office are all encrypted?
Yes.
But it's really not needed for the ambulance or fire department.
If you ask me because of the expense, I would say it's not needed and I always have. But that argument is changing quickly. Almost to the point where I, I am worried about the next eight to ten years and I'm on the statewide encryption summit. Um, now we talk about this, I'm worried about them coming in ten years, you have to have encrypted capable equipment, even if you're firing EMS. The reason being is we're seeing an uptick in incidents where fire and EMS are working side by side with law enforcement. Whether that be an active shooter or whatever it may be, and there's a need for stuff to be encrypted. And so the other part of that is every active shooter that's happened in this country right now, those law enforcement agencies that went encrypted, their, their other public safety partners in fire EMS world can't hear anything they talk about. So they don't know that situation awareness will then, which can then in turn put them in a bad situation. So there's no mandate to go encryption and, uh, you know, again, should there become a funding path for the county board here to buy any one radio? I, I didn't include that encryption as a line item for that. Some other people might argue with me, other system administrators in other states or counties here that that wasn't a good idea, but it comes on the dollars and cents and I just have a tough time seeing that. No. The other thing to keep in mind is Motorola's a business, they're there to make money, right? That doesn't mean encryption can't be turned on on a particular radio if it has that hardware built in, right? Everything is sold, everything's a software expense. So if I buy a law enforcement grade model, it might have an encryption board in there, but I can ultimately decide to not pay for that feature. So therefore it's in there, but it's not turned on because I haven't paid for the licensing, if you will. And that's more how they're operating, much like a lot of these technology companies, they're switching from a hardware business to a software business. And while that radio is full-featured, but you didn't pay for all the features to be turned on.
And you could turn them on at a later date.
Sure.
Just a, just a comment around that. I mean, if you're going to, I understand that you could have the capability to do that as a, uh, ambulance or a fire department. But there's a liability if you're able to hear the encrypted stuff. You are a licensed peace officer. They're a volunteer fire department. Those are vastly different for who should hear what. Yeah, I would say, I would say it would, there would have to be some really serious thought around around who's a fighter, a firefighter and who's a ambulance driver that can hear what is encrypted.
Right.
So there's a, that's a, I mean, that's a, I mean, that's out there to me.
Yeah.
Law enforcement, yes, I understand. But beyond that, in Goodwood County, we're updating our radios.
Yep.
So Zambrota PD updating theirs, Cannon Falls updating theirs. Are all the, all the law enforcement in Goodwood County updating their radio system?
As it stands today, all the user radios for law enforcement in the county, with the exception of Kenyon Police Department, they don't, they have some encrypted portables and mobiles, but not all because it's a funding issue.
But they've updated their, their, their.
Yep.
Mobiles. Okay. So then it comes down to the question and the reason we're having this is quite frankly, because the, the fire departments and EMS would like to get better radios.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And I'm, I'll be honest, I'm not opposed to using some of the ARPA dollars to help get to them. But there certainly has to be some mechanism to put away dollars for that going forward. And not paying for all of it. But the, the flip side of that is this whole infrastructure stuff that other counties are actually charging some for, that we don't charge a dime for, and that's a choice on the, on, on our part. Um, but as those costs go up, we need to look at that going forward too. How could we, how can we, or should we offset that a little bit? Because quite frankly, Cannon Falls Fire Department goes into Dakota County all the time.
Yep.
Or, you know, Pine Island, I'm sure that goes into Olmsted County or Dodds County. I mean, it's not just our county when it comes to some of those costs.
Right.
So I think we need to think really hard about some kind of equity in there from somewhere.
Yeah. And, and to comment on your first part about who needs to hear what, this is, this is a, a state problem. Well, and unfortunately we can blame the federal government for it. The federal government, the FBI changed their CGS security policy. CGS is criminal justice information, um, system. Um, and they have said, they updated their policy to say any NCIC, National Criminal Database Stuff Traffic, if it's going to be aired over a police radio, has to be encrypted. And so that trickled down from the federal government to the state, state put it out statewide. There's law enforcement users in parts of this state that they're lucky they even have an armor radio, much less an encrypted armor radio, right? And so, but, but yet we're facing this new FBI CGS security policy says, if you're going to share that someone has a warrant over the radio, that needs to be encrypted? Wow, that opened up a big old can of something. And so as we have had these discussions, you know, folks like myself scratch my head and say, okay, but if our firing EMS partners who are not sworn law enforcement officers, but they have encryption and they can scan us for their situational awareness, now they're going to hear NCIC information and it's, the policy says it's meant from this user to this user, no one in between. And so that's all a hot topic right now and it's, it's, everyone's trying to, I don't know what's going on here.
Ten, ten years, supposed to quit.
So, but you know, that's a challenge. Now, I'll say this commissioner, um, again, there's only four counties that are charging for infrastructure. Those are metro counties charging other agencies that have big budgets. I'm not a politician, I never will be a politician right then. I don't want to be the one going to a small fire department saying, hey, start ponying up X amount of dollars per radio per year to pay for infrastructure. And they're going to be like, what do you mean? I can't even afford my own radio, right? So I'll leave that.
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying we should, but I'm, I'm saying that from, from a end user, Waimanga Fire Department, Kenyon Fire Department, do they even know how much that costs us? There's nothing with, you know, we're already providing this much. We'll, you know, as I said, I am not opposed to using some ARPA dollars to do it. But I'm not going to do it unless there's some method in place to support it going forward because I don't, I don't trust that there will be dollars come to us magically like there has been in the last year or two.
Right, yeah.
To do this in ten years or in five years or in eight years. So I, you know, it's about planning and it's about being thoughtful. And I think, you know, we've worked hard at the county over the last X number of years to be more thoughtful about how we do capital plan and how we manage that in a very
systematic.
Secure and systematic way. And I'm just saying, everybody else needs to think about that too, because, you know, the pot of gold always isn't at the end of the rainbow.
Right.
Well, the problem was in twenty-ten, we, Sheriff McCarland did get the grant to get everybody radios and I think the thought was, you know, maybe they'll do it again. Um, well, the monies aren't there and it's ten, now it's twelve years out. Radios went out in twenty-nineteen, you know, essentially about ten years. And nobody planned for replacement and now we're in this position and that's why we're giving you the information so you could discuss it.
And it's a, yeah, quite frankly, right or wrong, Motorola's got a really good business plan. We're going to roll this out and after so many, it's no different than this. After so long, it gets slower and what do you do? You get ticked and you go buy another one. You know, that's a, yeah, we've got that figured out. We'll just slow it down and then after so long and.
And this is why this whole thing's a tough debate beyond the borders of our county. I mean, it's, uh, yeah. I don't know. The, the funding has been in a debate for the last two years. I know even before I came to the county, I used to say, you know, we always are talking grants at the Southeast Emergency Communications Board level. I want to hear about grants that are going to provide new equipment because this stuff's starting to be end of life, right? When you have a computer that's end of life, I don't see John Smith coming in here and saying, let's push it well beyond that. That just doesn't happen for security costs and everything else. So.
Well, and, and grants, your grants are really not the answer.
Right.
It's dedicated funding.
Absolutely.
Because there's winners and losers with grants and you know who the losers are? Way outstate Minnesota.
Right.
End of discussion. It's always a small guy out at the end of the rope that's going to get stuck with it. And the grant system doesn't work. It needs to be dependable funding. If they, they're serious about serving people, then it's about dependable funding.
All right. And I think we have an opportunity this year specifically for, to talk to our legislators about just that very topic. Is there, as we know, there's money out there now. Because what happens if a small-town department can't staff it, they can't afford it, they can't, you know? Do they come to us at the county and say, well, you got to provide us with fire service? I don't, I don't want to do that.
There's nothing in state statutes. Of course, the township, townships have to contract for fire service and they have to have coverage for.
They'd have to find someone else to contract, I think.
Right. And incorporated cities have to provide their own. Just like they do for law enforcement. Right?
Yeah.
Have you seen any progression in the whole FirstNet expansion that that is?
Yeah, FirstNet is a thing. You know, we have FirstNet sites here in the county. I got a, I got a FirstNet phone that we're trying on their, their network. You know, there's FirstNet, there's Verizon, which the county's been on. Verizon's FirstNet service is called Frontline. It's the same priority and preemption serve cellular service, uh, for public safety to which we're on. Um, and then there's T-Mobiles and I think T-Mobile has some cheesy name for theirs. So all the cellular vendors are the same thing. What FirstNet's going to be able to do that some of these other, um, cellular providers can't do is app-specific applications that might have criminal justice data on there and things like that won't be interoperable unless you're on a FirstNet service. Um, but a lot of the committees, both statewide committees, nationwide committees are saying, these apps need to work on any cellular provider's platform, right? So, um, FirstNet is kind of a catchphrase thing, you know, um.
Well, they're still looking at it from a cellular platform. It hasn't, I mean, if I want to discuss it initially, like this was going to build out the whole communications network. And the impression I got initially was this would probably take over even the radio aspect or the some, this network would cover everything. Like, so the radio thing would be null in five, 10 years if this system worked and got built properly with technology changes, but it's not, it's maybe still trying to get there, but it's not.
I, uh, and actually it, it's interesting because I just had this conversation as a, at a national level on the SafeCom group. None of us think LMR, Land Mobile Radio, that's the armor system, will ever go away. There's going to be a convergence. In fact, there already is. I know this is hard to believe, but Motorola last month announced their next line of radios. And their next line of radios have LTE built into them as well. So here's an example. I mentioned you go down the welts, there might be going to building, no, no coverage, but you got great FirstNet coverage. Your radio is going to now switch over to that cellular backhaul and connect through the systems back to the armor network. So truly you don't have any loss of coverage, right? Great feature. Does it increase the price of the radio? Yep. Are those two technologies merging? Yep. And I see that being the platform moving forward, but oops, solely going on to, to cellular, whether it be FirstNet, Verizon, T-Mobile, any one of those carriers, um, I just don't see, because of the, the, what we've already seen, unless they make some big changes. You look at these states that are facing hurricanes and stuff and FirstNet's going down. Now, FirstNet has a lot of tools to offer their customers such as deployables and such after natural disasters, but they're not quite there yet and I don't ever see Land Mobile Radio, LMR, which is the armor system, ever truly going away.
Okay. Anybody else have questions, specific information?
With that being said, I just wanted to touch on this because I, I know Administrator Anderson mentioned this. Mobile data terminal agreements and how does that work? It's the same type of thing that the radio system is in a way for our law enforcement users. Um, this is a twenty-twenty-three project that we need to take a hard look at in next year. And that is, um, look at the existing mobile data terminal. When I say a mobile data terminal, I'm talking the computer that's in the squad car, right? That is how our law enforcement officers are getting their calls for service. That's how they're seeing the map and while the other law enforcement cars are. We need to look at that agreement to accomplish a couple of things. We need to clean up the fee processes. The county, the, the county sheriff maintains the computer-aided dispatch system for that, which we have to initially fund all the costs for the licensing and the software to make those systems possible. Goodwood County IT maintains those computers in that network. Um, secondly, we need to look at updating this agreement to include our fire and EMS users. Why? Because we have some fire agencies and some EMS or ambulance agencies already saying, we'd love to put an MDT into our fire truck or ambulance. One, to increase the information and capability we get to our screen as we're responding. Two, to have our own records access like our law enforcement partners do and, and so on and so forth. So, we need to update that. So we're going to look at doing that. But this is a, like I said, this is a collaboration between the sheriff, county IT, our CAD vendor to address everything from security. But yet provide availability because these systems run through the criminal justice data network and we have obligations via the BCA and the FBI that we have to comply with. So we need to get that updated. We need to clean up the fee process on that. So that's clean. So when I have a fire department say, hey, I know it works now, I can say, this is what it's going to cost you to join, right? The county should never own the sole bare responsibility to front full services for agencies that are not Goodwood County. Um, that's an operational cost. So we need to clean up that fee process. Our, our law enforcement users and partners, they all have these individual computers in their cars today. And, and it works great. But again, we provide the primary support on that, uh, from the CAD to all of secure accessing. But again, we provide the primary support on that, uh, from the CAD to all of secure accessing licensing tools and stuff like that via county IT. So that is on our to-do list. Um, this agreement that we currently have, I envision the new mobile data terminal agreement to be made an amendment or an, uh.
Amendment or appendix?
To this agreement. And I would only, and I would only, okay, thanks. Attorney back there. So.
Something you're worried.
Yeah. And then to this, because that's what other companies have done. And, and when I say other companies, Hennepin County, Washington County, they really have it nailed down. They can say, oh, you know, the city of Crystal wants to join onto our CAD system. Here's the fees. Here's how you get on and you have to agree to this and we're good to go. That's what we need to clean up here because I, I, I don't think those costs are solely always on the top.
Do the police departments in Goodyear County pay?
Yep. They pay, they pay, uh, they purchase their computer, uh, they pay, if they're adding additional MDT, there might be a one-time cost to add. And then they have annual expenses for the amount of users, the, um, multi-factor authentication to get in there and so forth. Then between, um, Sheriff's Accountant and County IT, they kind of come up with those, but it's never been made real clean and I like things clean. So we need to work on that.
Sure.
Wrap it up.
Didn't you have something very similar a while back with, I think it was the investigation of cell phone investigations? Where you sent a letter out to every, to the other departments, what, a year beforehand saying, a year from now, you're, we're going to have to start charging. We can't do it for free anymore.
Right. We did that with, with some of the programs that we use for, for.
But there were some that either didn't read the letter.
Well, some just thought it was double taxing and, and we disagreed.
It was.
And so.
It was something that was going to pass and all, yeah, pass by.
Yeah. So, um, we, we're in, we're almost a year into that now and it's, it's working, it's working fine. Problem with one of our programs that would cost ten thousand dollars last year, and I'm going to have to talk to, uh, Mr. O'Keefe, has now gone to twenty thousand dollars. Um, so, but it's very valuable and I think Aaron would agree, um, that we need to keep that. But those are, and we're not going to increase those fees because we already kind of made a contract with potentially Red Wing and a couple others, but.
Okay.
Everything's going up. It just went from one year to ten thousand dollars. So, uh, we'll reach out to our partners at the county attorney's office again, so.
Yeah. And I, and I'll just make a slight comment to that, that I think it's always important, at least when I'm trying to do my database businesses, what are we statutorily required to provide our partners?
Okay.
And Goodyear County provides a lot more services to our public safety partners than we're statutorily obligated to. Whether that be the radio system, all the different systems used in a nine one one center and so on, you know? So it's always something to, to think of.